I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start with exemplary people, Jack, regarding the Monroe Rotary Club.
You've got it. So Katie and Steve, if you could meet me right over here, please.
Thank you for coming out tonight, first of all. So we talked about who our first exemplary people should be for this school year, and we decided that Rotary would be the right place. And the primary reasons are their contributions to the community at large and the contributions they make to our school. It's a great organization that does a lot of good for our community. And on the school side, some of the things that they provide are the student a month that they run each month to recognize Massey students. They also sponsor our exchange students that come in on an ongoing basis. And they also provide dictionaries to our third graders on an annual basis. And regarding the latter, I had a Rotarian ask me recently, is that still relevant, dictionaries for third graders? And it is, it is. One of the things that we need to teach at that age is how to alphabetize. And you know my love for technology, but this is not the right place for technology. If you're going to learn how to put things in order, you need to use a book. And so they bring those in each year. It's an exciting day for our third graders when they receive those. And it's just another one of the many things that Rotary does out of a very generous spirit for our schools and also for the community. So we wanted to take this opportunity to thank Katie and Steve and all the Rotarians for what they do for our schools and for the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are you going to do a photo op here, Mr. Superintendent slash photographer?
I'll represent him as well.
Yes.
Are we in the way?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. For the chairman, did you say the dictionary?
So first, I'd like to add an item to the agenda under new business, which is voluntary retirement incentive, October 2019. Can I get a motion to accept? Jeff, second. Shannon, thank you. Okay. Next, recognition of the 2020 Teacher of the Year.
And Doug, if you could join me up here.
I'm very proud to introduce to you our Teacher of the Year for this school year, Doug Delvecchio. And we had the great pleasure of introducing him at our convocation this year, but this is our first official recognition by the Board of Ed at a Board of Ed meeting. Doug was nominated by 15 different individuals, including administrators, colleagues, parents, and students. And the students were both present and past students. And some of those students didn't even have Doug as a teacher. And it just speaks to the power of his work in our schools, that he has an amazing presence that everybody in the school community values. Now, it's one thing to be nominated by all those different individuals, but it's a whole other thing when you're nominated by your wife, because they really know the truth. And Jackie Delvecchio had some wonderful things to say about Doug, knowing him better than anybody else. So she said, "I've watched him spend hours at home revising a lesson that he's taught solidly for 10 years. He reads and reads and reads the lengthiest books on dead guys who made some impact on our country." And students truly love hearing Doug speak, and although they may not remember each historical event or date, something resonates with them, his compassion for them, his empathy, his interest in their interests. And that really speaks so loudly and clearly to what Doug brings every day. He's interested in every student as an individual and makes them feel a sense of belonging and purpose when they come to our schools each day. So Doug, we want to thank you for all that you do for the Monroe Public Schools, and we're very proud of this achievement for you.
Thanks again, Jack.
Thank you, Doug.
Standing inside, I'm going to give you the center.
I have to say something. My son, Michael, whose birthday is today, had Mr. Delvecchio in middle school. And not only did he have a profound effect on my son, but on all of us, because he would come home and tell us what he learned in class every day. So I still think of you when I hear Billy Joel's "We Didn't Start the Fire."
Yes.
He used all the lyrics in that song, JFK, Blown Away, what else? It has all kinds of history lyrics in that. So I still, all these years later, think of you.
I still remember Mike very fondly, Mrs. Cosisco and Mrs. Blake over there. We were just talking about, you know, how great a kid he was. He is. So please tell him I say hello.
I will tell him, but congratulations to you, well deserved. I'm sorry.
Is he still a big sports fan?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda of approval minutes, review of warrants, and notification of appointment. Jack, the notification of appointment.
Yes, we have a new special education teacher joining us at Stepney Elementary School. I had the chance to meet with her last week, and we're very pleased to have her joining our staff. And I'm just trying to find where she is on my agenda here. Alexandra, what's that?
Sixteen.
Thank you. Ah, there it is.
Just wanted to hear what that was.
Alexandra, and I'm missing.
Cortuccio.
Thank you. Alexandra Cortuccio. So while we're very pleased to have her on staff.
Okay. Can I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, please? Shannon, Christine, second. Okay. Next, reports of the committees and the liaisons. So should we start with our student reps?
Sure.
We can. Go ahead, please.
So last Thursday, our student government held an open forum. That was open to teachers, faculty, other students, as long as student government body. And we decided on Spirit Week themes. So the Friday before Spirit Week, we're into a pink-out event. The Monday following, we're into America Day. Tuesday, we're into surfers versus bikers. Wednesday, we're into color wars, freshmen being purple, sophomores being green, juniors being blue, and then seniors have a blackout. Thursday's our themed day, so seniors are camo, juniors are superheroes, sophomores are eighties, and freshmen are their favorite movie characters. And then Friday's the classic Massey Colors Day with our homecoming assembly. Oh, and also on the Wednesday, we're doing a bonfire for all the Massey students. And then there was also a townwide kickoff to the Think Pink Monroe Initiative that took place on October 1st on the Green. And so Massey is getting involved, plenty more sports teams are getting involved, and Briggs is going to talk more about that.
Also on the topic of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, the boys soccer team had a game today at four o'clock against Bethel, and they showed their support by wearing their pink jerseys. Also, currently right now, the field hockey team has their annual breast cancer awareness game against New Fairfield, so hope they win. Also, Mr. Schmidt's physics classes are all required to build a homemade catapult. And I've been working on it for the past three weeks. And it's, so the contest is this week, and it's three different events, and the best catapult wins. And I have a lot of confidence in mine. I hope I win. It's Jets theme, so maybe I'll win something. I don't know.
Finally.
Friday night, our football team played Bonnell in our pink-out game for breast cancer awareness, and they won 37 to 13. And then our students also took place in an Alzheimer's walk on September 29th, and it's to raise money for Alzheimer's research. So our students are doing a job.
Great.
Great job, guys.
Other committee reports? No. Policy.
I'm going to head out, sorry. I bet you can't examine tomorrow.
By all means, good luck. Wish you the best.
Two tests.
Thanks, Molly.
Have a great night, guys.
Thank you.
See ya.
Policy committee met tonight. We will be, I think we have two on the agenda for approval tonight, and we'll have two more coming before the board next meeting. With that, now that we've concluded the difficult portion of the meeting, I'll turn it back over to Donna, taking reins from here.
Well done, sir.
All right. I guess we're changing, because I would have been fine staying there. All right. I take it we're on seven?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Next up is public participation. If anybody would like to come and speak.
Who I will.
All right, Steve, come on, name and address. You know the drill.
Yeah. I saw an open mic, so I figured I'd say hi. Anyway, Steve Vavrick, 68 Longview, and I commend Briggs for being a Jets fan. It's tough. Now, that being said, your agenda is wrong. I am not president-elect, I'm just a secretary.
It was hopeful thinking, Steve.
No, because Dr. Jack is next. That being said, in October, we're calling it Socktober. We had a brand-new member step up, Molly Smith, and we're going to do a Socktober, which for the week of October 13th through the 18th, we'll be collecting socks in Last Drop Cafe, which everybody seems to be going there, and Monroe Social. So there'll be a drop-in for socks. Every pair of socks that is donated, Monroe Rotary will donate another pair for Center for Family Justice, for Home of the Brave, and for Bridgeport Rescue Mission. So hopefully you all buy some socks, put them in the bin at these places, and make this first-timers event a good one. So thank you very much, great to see you, and enjoy your budget talks.
Thanks.
I take it you want new socks, Steve, not used socks, right?
New socks.
You get a free drink.
Yes, new socks. Oh, yes. And you get a free drink, buy one, get one free.
So if you donate socks and buy a drink, you get a free drink.
And who are you? That was Katie Bailey, our president this year for Monroe Rotary Club. Thank you, Katie.
All righty. Thank you so much. Anybody else? All right, we will move on to the report of the superintendent, then.
So first, we have budget update. Frank, you want to start us off, and I'll provide the handouts to the board members?
What we'll be doing at the regular Board of Ed meetings is to provide an update on the board's financial condition and specifically on the special education deficits. We had a report, we gave a full presentation at the last meeting. A couple of questions were raised on that. We've gone back, and the special ed director, myself, have reviewed the items, and we're able to reduce the potential deficit down to $91,529. And the big adjustment on there was the settlements, looking at the settlements, the number that was used for that. And so as of this point, we're estimating $91,000 deficit in special ed. The key on the special ed, as we get further into the fiscal year, the special ed has to file a report on December 1 of all the high-cost students. And that report is pretty much ready by the middle of November. So the middle of November, we'll actually know what the high-cost students are, and we will do a projection of the estimate of the excess cost reimbursement coming back to the Board of Ed. And that's a significant number. Right now, we're showing 700, almost $800,000 of reimbursement on the excess costs. Well, that will be dependent on each individual student. We have to calculate it by student, not by gross numbers, so that we'll have a much better handle than where the special education budget is in November. So in the handout we just gave you, if you notice, it's dated at the top, Special Education Financial Overview as of October 7th. And you can compare that to the one presented at the last meeting, which was dated to September 23rd, I think it was. So we'll be providing the Board of Ed with a regular update on these.
All right, thank you, Frank. And then just to keep everybody fully informed, too, we're continuing with our freeze, as I shared at the last board meeting. It's a hard freeze, meaning anything that's not essential, we're not going to be expending. The reason for that is to be able to make up for the special ed overage that Frank just outlined, as well as we have this $300,000 plug number that's in the budget, too, that we had to make up for as well. Did you have a question, Alan?
Yeah, I just had a question about the settlements. It says 275.
Mm-hmm.
How many settlements is that? Is that two settlements or one settlement? Six?
So we anticipate that the freeze is going to yield about $411,000. We've gone through line by line to figure out where we're going to find the savings, and then that amount will be applied to compensate for these overages. So that's our plan. The October 1 enrollments, I shared an update.
Can I ask a few questions?
Absolutely.
Okay, so how does this compare to the numbers from last time?
The deficit last time was approximately $300,000, so it's dropped significantly down to $91,000. And the major change was in the adjustments for the settlements. It was a budgetary issue, looking at what was in the budget.
Sorry, to be not understood. So what is a settlement? What is that?
Remember when we talked about going to PPT?
Yeah.
And there are three options. If the parents disagree, you can go to mediation or go to due process. Sometimes when you get to mediation, you make a settlement rather than going for the full-blown due process. So it's kind of meeting in the middle of the two parties, and that's a settlement agreement.
So we were able to do more settlements as opposed to going?
To full-blown due process.
Okay, gotcha. All right, makes sense. And when we say the budgeted amount, so BOE-approved budget, 2952 compared with the special ed budget request, what is that? That's what we requested going into 2019 compared with what was approved?
Correct. Remember, we talked about the, I think you had pointed out last time on the chart, we had, Mr. Conley had put in $275,000 for settlements, but I had already budgeted some of that because we had known about them prior to the budget being approved. But since the approval of the budget, there were additional settlements, which is the difference which is on here.
And the net difference between them, your budget, and that's going to come up in the new budget, the budget request of $3,801,000 versus what's in the budget of $2,952,000, that difference was in anticipation of the excess cost grant coming in and reducing your expenditures. So what's going to happen this year, when you get your January, when you get your January financials, you're going to see big deficits in tuition and transportation. When we actually receive the check from the state reimbursing us, we're going to go in and reduce the deficits. We're going to apply it to the budget and reduce your deficits, i.e. reduce your expenditures, because the state is reimbursing us for these high-cost students. It is not an increase in the budget as it is just reducing expenditures. And what the Board of Ed's been doing all these years, and it's the proper way of doing it, is netting out your anticipated excess cost reimbursement. So if you think you're going to be spending $4 million on special ed, you're doing what a lot of boards do, in that you anticipate how much excess cost the state's going to give you back, and you win with a net budget. Some boards of Ed choose to go in for the gross amount, the full $4 million, and then use the excess cost reimbursement as a balancing act for any anticipated students. And the board can choose whichever way you wish to do it. The key to it is full disclosure to the town of how you are assembling your budget. Is it a gross budget or is it a net budget? And that's a discussion we'll be having when we present the budget to you.
I spoke to Mike Manjo on Thursday, and we talked about, he's in town, I believe, the end of October, so he was hoping that we would meet around the end of October to discuss how we are going to budget for next year with regard to special ed.
I would hope so, yeah. I mean, it would be good going into budget, you know, talks this year, understanding what everybody's going to be agreeable to, given where we're at.
Exactly, exactly. So he already knows all about it and everything, but we want to have him face-to-face as opposed to on the phone. So he told me on Thursday he'll let us know when he's going to be able to actually meet, and then we can, you know, go through all the different options and figure out what we're going to do budget-wise going forward.
But George, just to answer your question, if you look at the little box on the bottom of the sheet that was just handed out to you?
Yeah.
Budgeted was the 175.5. After the approved, after the budget was approved, additional, the 99 was additional that was not anticipated at the time.
That's where we're at right now.
In that, in the settlements.
Correct.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Any other questions on that?
No.
Maybe we'll go, if it's all right, we'll go to special ed, since we have Kay up here. So we've talked finances and then new students and efficiencies, if you want to touch on those.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing new really to report since last time. Our October 1 number is 425. And we have a couple of kids that we're working on programming for, but we won't know the actual cost cost for a few more weeks. And then we have a few kids, regular ed and special ed, that are in small crises right now. So we will be working on those kids as well and planning for those as they come along.
And then just to keep you informed as well, so the work on, towards our regional special ed center continues also. Matter of fact, we have a meeting tomorrow. JP's going to be there, Ken's going to be there, and the purpose of that meeting is to discuss, try to find some state funding for seed money, or at least, you know, see if there's some possibilities there, some options. So those conversations continue, that work continues. So there continues to be hope that we'll find some way to pull that together in the coming months. And thank you, Kay. And next is my item B, the October 1 enrollment projections. I just wanted to give you one other update on that. I only have one slide for you tonight, and it's also Board of Ed members. It's a link that you have in your agenda. And just to show you the October 1 numbers along with the projections that we've received in the past. So the black here is our actual numbers from October 1 this year and the preceding three years. And you can see for 2019-20, we have 3,127 students for our official October 1 numbers. The red is a projection that was done by Melona McBroom in 2015. And then the blue is a projection that was done, a revised projection that was done in 2016. And what you'll notice there is that the blue revised projections track much more closely. I did talk with them, they said the reason for the difference was there was a change in the marketing, the real estate market at that point in time. But you can see for a projection in 2016, what happens and follows is a pretty strong parallel. So I've taken every, all the information they've given out, given for us, out to 2021 to 22 that year, and you can see the trends that they projected in that older report. They are revising these predictions, and we should have those in the next three or four weeks. And I'll share those out as soon as we receive them.
Is the 2016, what is that? Was that the middle of the road?
Both of these are medium projections.
Medium projections. Now, go into the detailed report. Are you going to pull that up or no?
I wasn't going to pull that up tonight. We can discuss it, and we will definitely have more around that when we get the revised demographic report.
Well, let's just go to the enrollment numbers, because I think it's very clear when I was reviewing them and calculating everything with regard to middle school in Jockey Hollow. Based on these numbers, there is no possibility of combining campuses, the two campuses into one until the third graders actually get to sixth grade. That is your first opportunity if those numbers don't increase, which they have been in the last few years. The higher up we go into the, when we get the kids to the middle school, those are where we're seeing the most increases in our enrollment, is in that middle school area. So I think it's safe to say that the STEM study of combining campuses at this point is?
Pretty much defunct.
Is defunct at this point, since it's at least three years out, based on my calculations. But again, that's where we're picking up. We're picking up at the middle school, upper elementary, middle school level. The first time it drops below 700, which is your, and 700 is really the pushing it, is when the third graders or sixth graders.
Right. It really speaks to the unique situation we have, in that most districts, you can start with the K numbers and just project out where you're going to be, but for us, we're picking up students in that upper elementary and middle continuously.
Well, it makes sense, because a lot of parents that are living in wherever, you know, if they're unhappy with their school system, they're going to move the kids out around fifth grade, middle school.
Correct. Because usually, what usually you find in those districts, the elementary schools are still good, it's when you get to the middle school and high school.
Yeah, they're like their neighborhood schools.
Right.
Elementary schools.
Right, right. But I think this is a pretty, pretty big picture of what's been happening, like, because we originally thought that we would be very close to 700, and it's 755. Like I said, it's, you're talking at least minimum three years out, and that could change once we get the demographic study, because if we're picking up in that upper level, you may, it may even be longer than three years.
And if this trend holds true, where they continue to project increasing enrollment over time, then it only makes the situation even worse.
Right, right. So, but it's an interesting trend.
Any other questions on enrollment? And next item is regarding proposed dates for a walk-through. Last spring, we left off talking about a walk-through, and in talking with Jack Giacchini and Jake Greenwood, we thought a good idea would be to pick up this year with the walk-through, both at Jockey Hollow and Massey. In the past, the board has been able to attend numerous schools. I think the last one we did was all three elementaries, looking at the workshop model?
Nope. We only, we did Jockey Hollow and we did Stepney.
Jockey and Stepney, okay. So this would be two more schools, or actually one more, because Jockey would be a repeat. And we picked out a few different dates for everybody. They're Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and they are October 28th, 30th, or November 1st. Just want to see what worked best for the board.
What time?
I think we were talking morning?
What time in the morning?
I think we have some flexibility there.
Shannon?
October 28th and 30th are okay by me. I can't come November 1st, and I imagine that's a tough day for the little kids, the day after Halloween anyway. I can't do it, but it might not, it might not be as on the morning after Halloween.
I'm an out on the 28th. I could make the 30th or the 1st work.
I can only do the 1st.
I think we're going to go with the majority of what everybody can do and who can attend. First of all, who can attend? Jeff, what about you?
I'm busy.
Any of them?
Yep.
Alan, what about you? You're out?
I could do the 28th or 30th.
Okay, so, so let's keep track of this. So we have, Jeff could do any, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Alan, you can only do 28th or 30th?
Yeah.
Who else can go to the walk-through?
28th or 30th.
Okay.
I can do the same date.
28th or 30th?
I could only do the 1st.
I'm the 1st.
That's the winner already.
George, are you out?
That's why I would be the 1st of all.
Okay. And I can do the 30th or the 1st. So let's see, we have?
30th has five.
Yeah, thank you. Did you keep? Okay, so I guess the 30th is it?
Okay, and then we'll work on a schedule for that day and then get that out to everybody.
Thank you, Joe, for keeping track of them. Okay, so the 30th, I guess, is the winner.
Okay, you got it. And then an update on NEASC. We have our collaborative conference coming up on Thursday, and Jake's going to give us a little bit of detail about that.
Good evening, everyone. Just going to pass around two things for you to look at as I talk. One is the schedule for Thursday and Friday, just for conversation, and the other is the report that we worked on over the past year. The last five pages are probably the most interesting, the others are a little more boilerplate, so I'll just kind of pass those around. You don't have to read them, but just to kind of understand what the teachers have been up to over the past year. You don't have to read them, but just to kind of understand what the teachers have been up to over the past year. So just a couple of notes, so the New England Association of Schools and Colleges will be coming here Thursday and Friday this week for what they call the Collaborative Conference. It's a, a new portion of the preparation, the continuous cycle we use for accreditation. It's, they're coming to take a look at our ability to meet their standards. And there's five standards that they're using. Learning culture, student learning, professional practice, learning support, and learning resources. So the document going around, the hundred-page document, is a self-study that we've completed over the past year where teachers got together in groups and we rated ourselves, gave ourselves commendations in areas for growth in each of those five standards. And you'll see when you go through that each of the five standards has about ten sub-standards. So you go through and really take a critical look at yourself on each of those individual standards and sub-standards. And it's not only research, we also did surveys, parent surveys, teacher surveys, and student surveys. So collected a lot of data, put it together, and then got together as a faculty and came up with some areas for growth, which we're presenting to the committee over the next couple of days, Thursday and Friday this week. So that's the self-reflection process. They're coming in for what they're calling the Collaborative Conference. And so that's where four professionals from area schools in New England come in and visit us. And we have four people coming and they sent us their names. We have, we're going to be welcoming Allison Greary, she's the NEASC Deputy Director. She's going to actually steer the committee. Brian Bodnar, Assistant Principal from Daniel Hands in Madison. Amy McKenna, an English teacher from Fitch High School in Groton. And Lorinda Ruar, a social studies teacher at Central High School in Bridgeport. And so on Thursday and Friday, they're going to be touring the building, meeting with the self-reflection committee, so teachers who produce the report, meeting with groups of students, groups of parents, groups of teachers, central office administrators, building administrators, department leaders, nurses, librarians, counselors, and special education personnel. So they're going to meet with everyone. And then they get back together, they write a report on Friday afternoon, and they have a discussion with us about how we're meeting those standards. And we set out areas for growth. So we have two more years to try and close the gap in those areas for growth before we have what's called the decennial visit. And when the decennial visit happens, that's October seventeenth through the twentieth of twenty twenty-one. Eight to ten people will be coming and looking at our growth over time. If we've closed the gap on the areas for growth that we've identified with the committee over the, over the, between the report and over the next eighteen months. And then hopefully they'll re-accredit us under their standards. And then the process starts again, ten more years. So anyways, at the end of this week, Thursday and Friday, we begin the Collaborative Conference, which is a group of individuals coming to take a look at that report with us and talk about how it's implemented in the school.
What are, sorry, can I ask?
Yeah.
What are the gaps that we're saying we have?
So we identified four areas. One is we have to develop what's called a vision of the graduate. That's where we talk about where we want to see students at the end of twelfth grade. That's a K twelve look, we'll be developing that over the next eighteen months. Continue our work with differentiation and shifting our focus of instruction from, from teachers and onto students. We'll be working with implementing what's called lesson studies or peer-to-peer classroom walkthrough model. And also implementing a social emotional learning programming for our kids, curriculum which we currently don't have that we'll be looking at. So those are things that are standards in the NEASC report. Areas that we're already identifying, we're saying these are things we want to work on over the next eighteen months. And they're basically coming in to give us some guidance how to do that. And then they come back in eighteen months and see how we did on that, and then hopefully it leads to re-accreditation.
So it says, is Masick High School Self-Reflection Report, does that, is that, so these are all things that we've internally identified?
So that's us commenting on each of the standards. So five standards, and they each have ten sub-standards, so about fifty individual items that they say make up a comprehensive high school. We've gone through, they being NEASC, NEASC, yep. We've gone through and rated ourselves on each of those and identified areas for growth.
All right, so we've identified these as our gaps.
That, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So it's not some other organization coming in and saying you're deficient in these areas?
Well, they, they technically could do that, but I don't think that's going to happen because that's why you do the self-study, is we're being honest with areas for growth. And our areas for growth aren't anything that you wouldn't see any high school. These are very progressive areas to be working in, in, you know, in nineteen twenty. So in any of the standards that you would consider, that you'd want to see Masick to be on level at, we're going to do just fine.
The other good thing about this work too, that Jake and staff have done a really great job with, is the board goals. If you remember back when we did those, a lot of that came from NEASC. So everything that he's identified as, and the staff has identified as gaps are actually goals within the Board of Ed Action Plan. So the alignment there is, is very strong too.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir. And then related to this, Joe, do you want to give a little background on the Vision of the Graduate and that work?
I guess I could repeat with Jake. Part of the NEASC process is coming up with the, the Vision of the Graduate. It's really determining the skills, knowledge, and dispositions we want kids to have when they graduate high school. So we're going to be starting October twenty-ninth, hopefully to get a couple of board members on that committee. It's a pretty comprehensive committee, it really tries to reflect the, the entire community, not just the school community. We have elementary school teachers, middle school teachers, high school teachers, administrators at all levels. But we also have, have reached out to Chamber of Commerce, business people in town, local clergy members, social services. And really the, the goal of the, of the committee is to define what is it that we want our kids to know and be able to do when they, when they graduate high school. Once we have that, it's, it's going to be important for, for Jake and the high school. But it's not really just a high school thing. Because once we know those knowledge, skills, and dispositions that, that we want kids to have when they graduate, now we're, now the work is going to go, you know, go back to our Curriculum Council to say, okay, how do we, what does that look like in kindergarten? What do we want our kids to be able to do in, in K one, two, three, four, all the way through middle school and high school? So that's going to be, it's going to be some work that we're going to, we're going to start. Our goal, I know Jake said eighteen months, our goal, my goal is to hopefully have this done sometime in January. I'm looking for, just so you understand the, the commitment here. We're going to meet October twenty-ninth for our first meeting at seven o'clock right here. And then I'm hoping one more meeting in November, skip December because I know December's kind of busy already. And then probably two meetings in January or one January, one February. And then by the end of February, have our, you know, what we are defining as those, those traits that we want our kids to have when they graduate high school.
And how many people do you want on the committee?
Right now, the committee has about, I think I counted the other day, about twenty-eight people, but I'd love to have one or two.
I meant for Board of Ed, sorry.
One or two, one or two, is it enough?
Anybody interested?
In all honesty, if, if everyone wanted to do it, that'd be great too. I'm, I'm trying to make it as inclusive as possible, but I was hoping to get at least one or two.
Does anybody want to serve on that?
What's that commitment, sorry?
It was one in October, one November, one January, one February?
Yeah, either two of January or one January, one February, depending on the timing.
What time, time of day?
Seven o'clock.
In the evening.
Probably, I, I've been telling people about five to eight hours total combined meeting time.
For the four sessions?
For the four sessions, hopefully we can do it in three, but.
Shannon?
I'm in as well.
All right.
Shannon, George?
All right. So you've got George, Alan, and Shannon.
Awesome, thank you.
Good, great. Thank you, Joe. And then one more item on here, and Policy had a chance to talk about this tonight. There's a new public act nineteen, I'm sorry, yeah, nineteen dash one ninety-five. And this is about high school graduation dates. And I know this is very early to discuss it, but it's more of an awareness. It is going through Policy Committee right now. And this came out of the Ellington Board of Ed. Some of the high schools in the state have to reserve these very large venues. I'll give Newtown as an example because I know it pretty well. Newtown reserves the Field House at Western Connecticut State University every year for the graduation. A lot of high schools look to get that venue. When they have snow days and when the dates shift around, it becomes a major headache because all these high schools have to shift trying to get reservations at this very desirable venue. As a result, the Ellington Board of Ed lobbied the state legislature to make a change so that they wouldn't be in that predicament. Now, for us, it means something different because we use our own field. And we have a lot of latitude of being able to move the date around because it's just, it's our venue. So what this statute allows is we have one hundred and eighty-two days in our school year. We could pick the date of graduation to be what's our current day one eighty, one eighty-two. The problem with doing that now as opposed to the old model of April first is if we get ten snow days, that date is going to move frequently. So that, that's, that's part of the problem. And/or you get a situation where you get, you know, a lot of confusion, really is what it comes down to. So just wanted to make everybody aware of that. The board might choose to continue to stay with the April first to pick the date so that we don't have that movement around. Or if it's a winter when there's not much going on, there's a little bit of latitude to choose to do so at a different time.
I, I understood it in reading it that, in reading it that you choose it now and it doesn't change as long as when you originally voted on it, it was at least a hundred and eighty days from.
Exactly.
Hundred and eighty, so it wouldn't move around. So if we chose, let's say, June tenth, and as long as that was a hundred and eighty days from the start of school, that's the date, it doesn't move.
Where it gets, I actually, I, my explanation was not good. Where it gets to be weird and problematic is the date then creates distance between the last day of school and graduation. So if you have those ten snow days, let's say we picked one eighty-two now, and there were ten days were added after the fact, then graduation is ten days before the last day of school.
Right.
Students have to go across the state with an empty folder because they haven't fulfilled all the requirements for graduation. And then go back to school, finish everything up, and then be provided the diploma to go into the folder for their diploma.
Right, that's really the issue. The issue is that if you, if you booked it, which is fine, you could have it that day. But the problem is that after the kids graduate, they may have to come back to school for an additional ten days.
This passed out of Policy Committee tonight, so we'll see this before the board next, next meeting. But my thinking on this is that this at least allows us the flexibility to say, okay, we think we're done with winter, let's book the date, right? Let's make sure that we, we lock that in. As opposed to, you know, having to wait aft, till after April first to do that, so.
And that we could still wait until, like, after April first, but we don't have to.
You could do any, right.
It's not a lot of more than you have to, so.
Right, it's just allowing flexibility to do it. I can see being personally problematic to tell kids, oh, you've graduated, but, oh, you haven't finished school and you need to still go to classes and you still need to take finals, so you need to still come back for ten days. But you really technically graduated ten days ago.
They would still be required to come back and fulfill those extra days, you know, one eighty or whatever.
Yes, they would still have to come back and fulfill the requirements.
Right, so.
Right, so as, as that's great for booking a venue, I mean, it becomes difficult trying to get the kids back.
Absolutely.
For, for.
Senior.
Yeah.
They have senioritis to begin with.
Right.
Starting now.
And I'm sure they're going to say, well, I don't understand.
Right.
I graduated already. Well, no, technically you didn't, we've had a ceremony, but technically you didn't graduate because you haven't completed your requirements for graduation. I, I think that's ugly.
You get a nice shiny diploma cover at graduation. You don't get your diploma.
That's right.
You get that on the last day of school.
And don't we have to provide colleges with their final transcripts too after they graduate?
Soon after, yeah, but that's not a, that's not a.
So there, there is an incentive to come back if, you know, to have those transcripts go to college. But still, I think, I think that that could be problematic. And I think you're going to have lots of possibly parents and students going, I don't understand. You booked it, so why do I have to come back and complete it, so. But I guess we can, you know, discuss that further when the policy comes up to us. All righty.
All right.
Are you all set?
I am, thank you.
All right. JP, you're up next, come on down.
It's a good segue from the public act resume.
And, and you don't have to state your address for the.
I will, if you'd like.
Nope, it's fine, okay, you're not in public participation, we'll just consider this.
I brought plenty of copies, but if some member of the audience wanted to, that's great.
Thank you for having me. For the record, JP Strudzinski, two eight zero Shelton Road. I was surprised when Chairman Lane today told me that I had six hours to do a legislative wrap-up for, for you guys. I was like, well.
We were surprised too.
That's fine, I mean, I'll do it. No, in all honesty, I do have a handout that I'm, I'm going out to you guys, take a look at it. As we go through this, we can answer some questions. I'm more than happy to have as long of a discussion as you'd like. Lots happened during the session this past year. We went from January to June. And I kind of listed some highlights. I didn't put every education bill that was discussed, but I thought that there were some that impacted Monroe. And again, I'd like to go through topic by topic, and I'm going to kind of breeze through it. But if you do have questions, please just, you know, feel free to ask. The first issue was the ECS funding. And obviously, that's a huge issue for the town of Monroe. For those that don't remember, in twenty seventeen, Governor Malloy slashed our funding to zero in his budget, in what amounted to be about zero, which was a over five million dollar cut, which was significant. If you'll, if your memory is good, you'll also remember that twenty seventeen was the year that the legislature did not create a budget during the regular session and then was deadlocked until September or October of that year, when we finally had a bipartisan budget. Reason I tell you that is as part of that bipartisan budget, there were phasing in of decreases for some towns and there were increases for others. Monroe is one of the towns that experienced decreases due to our economics here. However, those were phased in over ten years. Why is that important? Because Governor Lamont this year proposed a budget which accelerated that phase in. Instead of ten years, he was going for, I think it was five or three years. So I have a chart here that shows the ECS funding that was proposed under Governor Lamont's budget, which was a fiscal year twenty decrease of seven hundred and thirty-four thousand and a fiscal year twenty-one decrease of one point four. Those are two separate numbers, they're not cumulative, which would have been an overall reduction of two point one million dollars over the next two years. Fortunately, and in a bipartisan way, the budget that came out of appropriations and that was ultimately passed by the legislature did not accelerate those towns. I took it upon myself to meet with the OPM Secretary, Melissa McCaw. I met with Governor's staff and really expressed my concerns. And I led a coalition of legislators from towns like South Windsor, Colchester, and other, Trumble, and other towns that were accelerated. And we were able to, you know, kind of have our voice heard. And then appropriations appropriately kept the funding where it was. So instead of a two point one million dollar decrease, we saw an overall reduction over the next two years of seven hundred thousand, which is much more manageable, which kind of dovetails into the next issue. But I want to just pause if anyone has any questions about the ECS funding.
And that's as far as we know at this point.
Yeah, so the state of Connecticut does a biennial budget, so we do a two-year budget. This was the budget year, and then we will do another budget in twenty twenty-one. But we would probably likely see that continuation of phase-out decreases unless there is some significant policy changes like the last two governors have tried to do.
And the phase-out goes to zero eventually?
Well, it's, the phase, no. The phase-in was a, I think it was a five percent reduction each year for the next ten years. But it does not phase out to zero. So that also goes into the pension obligation shifts. As I'm sure you're aware, there's been a push from the state to have towns pay for teacher pension obligations. Governor Lamont did propose in his budget that Monroe, towns like Monroe would cover twenty-five percent of pension costs and then spread it out over three years. Other town, other cities would, would pay far less. The good news is, is that after much, much criticism and a lot of debate, that final budget, again, in a bipartisan way, did not put teacher pension obligations onto the towns. And this would have cost us three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars this next year and six hundred and fifty-one thousand the year after that, and then increased after that. Projections were up to, I believe, one point two million in the third year, which obviously is a significant increase. So if you look at that cost potentially, and you look at the overall reduction in ECS, that would have been a significant hit to Monroe. We're not talking, you know, hundreds of thousands, we're talking about millions of dollars over the next three years alone, which was very concerning and led to a lot of the gray hairs that you see on my head. But again, I want to give credit where credit is due, the Appropriations Committee, the Governor's staff did meet with us. And in a bipartisan way, we were able to get that part of the budget addressed for towns like Monroe.
JP, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, what's the scuttlebutt of that in the future? Are there, is there still a push and, you know, to try to get it to the towns?
I would say that I'm confident that it would come back with the state continually looking for more money and trying to reduce their costs. Towns like Monroe, which are considered to be affluent compared to other towns, they are consistently looking for ways to, to cut spending or at least find different areas to spend money. So in this case, I think it will come back. I just don't know how, how well it's going to be received. The municipalities really don't want to see this. But if you, if you do some sort of a sliding scale where, you know, towns considered rich or affluent have to pay more than cities that tend to can't afford it, then you just have to figure out where the votes are and try to get it a part of it. But I, I do feel that it will come back. I'm just hopeful that the same response will be there to say how unpopular it is.
And what about a new version of a pension plan? Is there any support? support for that to, you know, leave the current employees as is, but to change the plan for new hires?
I have not heard that, and I would be surprised if that was something that would be brought up, simply because the teachers' union has a very strong and powerful lobby in Hartford.
Right, I mean, 'cause I know New York State has many different versions of the pension plan, you know.
Right, six tiers.
Yeah.
It is, it's possible. There is a tiered state employee retirement system as well, with new hires, you know, contributing to a 401K-style retirement with some smaller pension aspects to it. But I would just be very surprised if, if that kind of thing were to happen. It's possible, it's very possible. I think in the next ten to twenty years, you're gonna see a major crisis when it comes to funding our pension at the state level, not just teachers, but state employees and municipal employees as well. So it's gonna be something that the state of Connecticut's gonna have to deal with, and we're just gonna have to find out what they're gonna be able to do, really.
Right, because it is a huge issue.
It's a massive issue. People don't even understand the billions of dollars that's involved in some of the payments that are coming up. This year in this budget that we just passed refinanced the teacher obliga, uh, teacher pensions over the next thirty years, which I actually introduced amendment on the floor of the House to take that part out, 'cause it does save money in the short term, but in the long term, it ends up costing the state taxpayers billions of dollars.
JP, there was a little bit of talk at one point, and I don't know if it's gotten any traction at all regarding ECS. For towns like Monroe, a do-not, do-not-harm kind of approach where, I mean, we get relatively little funding compared to other places, so there, what I had heard is there was some attempt to try and preserve flat funding for districts like ours that don't get as much as some of the bigger districts.
Sure, I mean, the flat funding would be great, I would wholly support that. At this point, though, we know that those reductions, those manageable reductions over time are in there, and if there was a way or if there was, you know, more revenue associated with the state budget for the next time, then I'm sure that would be something they would consider. But I think at this point, it's fair to accept, to expect, you know, roughly three to five percent decreases for the, you know, each year, which, it, obviously it's not great, you know, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over two years is not wonderful news, but when you look at losing two point one, or you look at losing five to six million, like we did a few years ago, this is something that at least is manageable. Alan?
JP, what, what, like, the teachers pay into the pension, the state, I mean, what, what happened to all that money? It was just spent on other things?
So my understanding is the teachers' contributions do make its way into the pension fund. It's just that the state has not, and historically, this has gone back decades, has not put the right amount of money in to cover the expenses. So the teachers' money goes directly into that, but that seven percent that you're paying now, the six percent that was being paid earlier, is not enough to cover the expenses of the teachers that are retired now, and there's no way projecting forward that unless the state makes some significant contributions, it's gonna be sustainable. And obviously, we have obligations to do that, the state, so.
How underfunded is it right now?
I don't have the exact numbers with me, but I do know that it's, it's manageable now, but in the next five to ten years, it's gonna become a big problem unless the state makes some serious investments. I can get those numbers for you if you'd like. So moving on to another hot topic, the proposed school regionalization. There were three separate bills that were proposed at the legislature that looked at regionalization. The worst, in my opinion, by far, was Senate Bill seven thirty-eight. It was proposed by Senator Looney, and it would develop a regional school district based on the probate court districts. There was no, in the bill, there was very little wiggle room, and basically what that means is, is even if you were in a regional school district already, you would have to reorganize your regional school district to meet the bill's standards. Now, that bill did die in the Education Committee. I did testify against that bill. There were also, I think, I want to say it was a twelve to sixteen-hour hearing. There were, I think, Dr. Zamory testified as well. There were a lot of people that were very up in arms about it. The bill did die in the Education Committee. There were two other bills. One that spoke to collaborations among school districts, which did make it out of the Education Committee, but it failed in appropriations. And then there was another bill about the Regional Education Service Centers, and that bill was put to the House, and it was never called for a vote. So there was a lot of discussion about regional school districts. There was a lot of uproar from the public, as you can imagine. But ultimately, there was no action taken on that. But again, that's something I expect to see come back next year and subsequent years, depending on how it goes. Any questions on that?
So there is some traction for that possibly?
There's definitely support for it from some of the legislative leaders. I know there are, it's something that the cities are pushing, and, you know, one thing about Hartford is that a lot of things, I know we talked about Republicans versus Democrats, but I also mentioned several bipartisan things that happened, but there's also a small-town suburb versus city kind of feel that goes on in Hartford as well. And obviously, the population centers of the cities have more representation in the capital because we're all elected based on our districts, which are about twenty-eight thousand people. So cities like Bridgeport, Hartford, New Haven, Waterbury tend to have much larger delegations than, say, Monroe, where I am the delegation, you're looking at me. So there are obviously power in numbers, but there's also, you know, Democrats that represent suburban or rural districts, and they are just as much opposed to some of this activity as, as I was. So it's not always so cut and dry, but there, there was traction from some of the leadership, but I, there certainly wasn't enough to actually take substantive action.
Why would cities be proposing regionalization of suburban or rural communities?
Well, I wouldn't say they were proposing it, but like, for example, Senator Looney, who is the President of the Senate, he's the top Senate Democrat, top senator as far as ranking goes, and he represents New Haven. So if New Haven were to be the centralized district, their, their district, their district wouldn't change. But in theory, if there were more regional school districts, then either the cities could absorb some of the suburbs, or in other plans, they could save on ECS funding because instead of the state having to write a check and give money to Monroe, Newtown, and, you know, the Easton Reading School District separately, they could combine and then make those payments smaller, in theory. Again, a lot of this is speculative, but that would be my best guess. I certainly can't speak for them on that issue. So if there's no other questions on that, you can flip over to the new public act. I just highlighted a few bills that I thought would impact the town of Monroe and Monroe Public Schools. The first one is Public Act nineteen dash eighteen concerning special education. This was something that passed unanimously. The bill does a series of things, and it was a compromise, you know, everything from requiring boards of education to electronically notify parents or guardians if their child has been identified as gifted, to a study by the State Department of Education to study authorization of private therapists to provide special education and related service directly to students during the school day, which was something that actually was my idea, and we were able to get a study done on that. The next one is an act concerning school climates. This also passed unanimously. Some of you may remember that title from years past, where it gave a lot of authority to teachers and administrators at the local level, and kind of took a little bit of the authority away from superintendents. This did not, it did require a social and emotional learning assessment instrument, and also establish a social and emotional learning and school climate council in place of the existing school climate committee. And the reason they did that was to insert more of that social and emotional learning into curriculum, which I already heard today, that that's something that you are looking at as a district, which I think is great. The next one is Public Act nineteen dash twelve, an act concerning the inclusion of Black and Latino studies in the public school curriculum. I voted yes on this bill, and I just wanted to let the board know that there will be a curriculum developed by the State Board of Education, and the requirement is that it's offered. I did ask the question, if it is offered, and one or two or five, you know, kids sign up, and that's not enough to meet the need, does it have to be actually taught? And they said, no, as long as it was offered, and if not enough students were to take it, it's an elective, then it wouldn't have to be. So the big, you know, one of the questions surrounding this bill was, if one person ta, wants to take it, do we have to hire a teacher just to teach that one student? And that's not the case. The next bill is an act concerning computer science. This is pretty straightforward. I'm very confident in talking to your superintendent that this is something that is already addressed in your curriculum, which I fully expect, and it's kind of a no-brainer, but you'd be surprised at school districts around the state that do not. So this is a requirement because obviously, technology is becoming an ever-growing part of our society. Public Act nineteen dash thirteen, and the reason I have this here is because this bans smoking and vaping on all school property inside or outside at all times, which I'm sure is probably a policy of this Board of Education. It also increases the age to twenty-one to purchase any vaping or tobacco product, which hopefully would address any eighteen-year-olds we have at high school that are purchasing and using tobacco devices. The final one I have is an act concerning the safe storage of firearms in the home and firearm safety programs in public schools. And this was a bill that expanded firearm safe storage laws to include unloaded firearms. It's called Ethan's Law. It was a, it was a child in Guilford.
Yeah.
Guilford area who was playing with an unloaded gun, was able to locate the ammunition and accidentally shot himself. It was a very tragic story, but technically, the person who left the unloaded weapon unsecured wasn't, wasn't, I believe, wasn't convicted because the law says that you must secure loaded firearms, but it didn't speak to unloaded firearms. So we changed the law, and it also allows firearm safety education classes from K through twelve, as opposed to K through eight. Doesn't require firearm training classes to be offered at school, it just allows it to be taught in school and up to grade twelve. So that's the summary of what happened in the twenty nineteen session. Obviously, it was a six-month session boiled down into two pages, but I am also available for any questions the board may have.
What do you see coming up for the next legislative session?
Your guess is as good as mine, Chairman Lane. It could be, it could be anything. As far as educationally, I don't serve on the Education Committee. Frankly, I never have, but I do know that they're always very busy. I foresee some sort of regionalization bill coming out, just for the sake of discussion. But again, you know, the Education Committee had to sit through at least twelve to sixteen hours of testimony, and sometimes, and I've seen this happen time and time again, if a chairman doesn't want to sit through a sixteen-hour hearing, then he or she won't call the bill for a public hearing, which means, in essence, it's dead. So I don't know if that'll be more realistic this year. I, I don't see it, I don't see it coming to an actual vote on the floor of the House and Senate, but anything's possible. But as far as other issues, you know, the Education Committee did pass, like I said, a bunch of different things. I'm sure there's more special ed bills out there that need to get done, but honestly, we, we won't know until February comes. But I will say that this is the long session, twenty nineteen was the long session, which means individual legislators can propose any individual bill they like. However, in the short session, which is twenty twenty, committees have to raise the bills. Legislators can write letters, or legislators can improve, can submit bills as long as they are financial in nature. However, usually what happens is committees will raise a bunch of ideas and concepts and bills that are not financial in nature, and it's, you know, that's kind of the way it goes.
Yeah, I was just trying to see if you kind of heard of, or is anybody talking about different things that may be coming up?
Not yet, again. I'm sure it's gonna be, you know, there'll probably be similar ideas to the ones we saw this year. But there will be, unless there is some major issue with our financials in the state of Connecticut, the ECS funding will not be adjusted because it was a two-year budget, so we won't see a new budget proposed by the governor and the legislature until twenty twenty-one.
Does anybody have any other questions for JP on any of this stuff at Hartford?
Again, thank you for having me. I don't want you to think that this is your only opportunity. For those of you that, that know me, I'm widely available by cellphone, email, and phone, so feel free to call me if you have a question, or if something comes up in the next few hours or weeks, and you hear something, just shoot me an email. I'm very good about getting back to people as soon as possible.
Yeah, and please, if there's anything coming up that you need our opinion on, that, that has been proposed, that maybe we haven't heard yet, you know, that you think of as an interest or want our opinion, please let us know so that, you know, especially when it has to do with unfunded mandates.
Absolutely.
Our opinion is no, thank you.
JP is great about reaching out, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, and very, very responsive.
Yes, so.
Thanks, JP.
Yeah, 'cause you'll be the, the one who hears it well before we do, you know. So if there is anything, please, because, you know, that always is most unsettling to us, as to.
Unfunded mandates. They have to be tough for everybody, cities and towns and Democrats and Republicans, I mean.
They are. The, the issue becomes, and again, I'm just speaking for myself, but some legislators believe that they know better than local boards of education and superintendents, and I'm sure Dr. Zamory can attest to the fact that, you know, superintendents have come out against policies, boards of education have come out against policies, but they pass anyway because of outside influence or because legislators just, you know, think they, they know better. I tend not to feel, feel that way, especially when it comes to educational issues. I'm an expert in one field, and that's nine-one-one communications. Everything else, I have to ask an expert. And not everyone has that same mentality. More.
No, you don't, I mean, no, I appreciate everything you do. I wish that there was more of a cohesive voice against the unfunded mandates.
There is. I mean, CCM does it, COS does it, superintendents, I mean, there is a lot of people that are against it, but there's also a lot of support on the other side of these issues for things that they feel are important. And the building is full of passionate people. Whether you agree or disagree, if you spend that much time trying to get an issue done, you're spending a lot of time, it means you're passionate about it. So whether it's a, a union, or it's an advocacy group, or whether it's a private company, you know, there are passionate people on all sides of the issues.
Thank you very much.
There's nothing else?
Thanks, Chairman.
Enjoy the rest of your meeting, and thank you again.
Thank you. We appreciate it. It's always good to know what's going on up in Hartford. Can't control it most of the time, but it's good to know. All right, we will move on to old business. We have four policies that are up for a second review and vote anticipated. Item, which is item A. So the first policy is sixty-one forty-two Basic Instructional Program. Policy thirty-one seventy-one point one, Non-Lapsing Education Fund. Thirty-four thirty-two Budget and Expense Report slash Annual Financial Statement. And thirteen thirty-one Smoke-Free Environment. So I have a motion to approve those four policies as presented. Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second? Thank you, Christine. Any discussion on them? I think we discussed, well, I know we discussed, I don't think. I know we discussed last time that the thirty-one hundred series are, are financial ones that we have started going through to update all of those. And the other two, Jeff, George, excuse me, do you want to say anything final about those two?
There's at least a couple of those that are on JP's list, so we're reformatting the policies to comply with the state statutes, so.
Perfect. Thank you. Any further discussion on those? All right, hearing none, all in favor of passing those four. Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to new business, which is the discussion of the fiscal year two, twenty twenty budget shortfall. Jeff, do you have the financial?
Yeah, the, as I reported before, the.
Do you have the actual report that you did? That shows what the four hundred and eleven thousand hard freeze saves?
It's, oh, I do not, no. The, we do have a budget detail, I can get that out to everybody. That has a detail on all the places that the four hundred and eleven is projected to come from. And as I mentioned before, that's to cover the enterprise carryover of three hundred thousand dollars, and then a hundred thousand dollars for special education.
All right. Does anybody have questions on that? So basically, we've, it's three hundred thousand dollars from the plug number. It's a hundred thousand dollars from, right now, for special ed from where we stand today. And the administrative team sat, worked together to figure out where to save that, and they actually did it, the report, with the hard freeze of what that actually amounted to, what the four hundred and eleven thousand dollars actually amounted to. But, Jeff, do you remember what it was?
Yeah, the freeze, basically, it impacts every available line where there's monies for non-essentials that we could capture monies prior to the end of the year. So as an example, professional development, funds that we haven't expended so far to date, there won't be expended. Maintenance and oper- Maintenance and operations, barring an emergency and barring necessarily, necessary maintenance, monies won't, will not be expended unless it's essential for keeping the equipment going or repairing something that's broken. In curriculum, curriculum that has not been started this year, monies for that will not be used. So it's really every single area of the budget, if it's essential, we have to do it. If it's a curriculum that's already up and going, and we need certain resources to make sure that that curriculum is delivered, it will be expended. But if it's something new that we're adding on, then those dollars will not be used, and they will be captured to make up for the shortfalls.
So when you say non-essential, is that anything that's discretionary, not contractual obligations?
Right.
Correct, correct.
Right, so it's like photocopy equipment for 10,000, sub-call-up is 20,000, conference course registration is 10, tuition, and this has nothing to do with contractual obligations of tuition, that's 30, supplies a 40, PD curriculum 83,000, IT 11,000, central office 20,000, and then each of the schools have cuts that they sat down and worked through. So Stepney is 14, Font Hallow is 13, Monroe L is 4,500, Jockey Hollow is 26,000, Masick is 19,000, and then for some, and facilities, about 100,000 in savings there for the hard freeze, works out to the 400.
We're going to get more details on that?
Yeah, I'll get this out to everybody. I'm sorry I didn't think to bring that, so I will get that out to everybody.
But this was a collaborative effort, right?
Correct.
This is the administrators.
Everybody in the audience went through and...
Correct. So the administrative team sat down, we sat down together and brainstormed. Actually, a lot of this work started back in the summer, and came to fruition in the last week or so, to get it pinned down and tighter.
Okay.
Since I wasn't here, did you guys vote on adding the involuntary retirement incentive to the agenda?
We did.
So I'm assuming that's item B?
Yes.
All right, so we have, we're going to be offering, since this is the off-year, a retirement, you know, offering the same retirement that we offer to the teachers in the not, in the current year, we'll offer it in case anybody would like to take advantage of the retirement. But we need a vote to actually offer that retirement. So do I have a motion to approve the voluntary retirement incentive? Thank you, Alan. Do I have a second? Thank you, Shannon. Any discussion on this?
How many, do you have an idea how many teachers might take advantage of this?
Our, this plan will allow up to eight. I don't, the, part of what's happening is the number of people that are reaching that point is getting smaller over time. You might recall last year's budget document, that was one of the things that I showed, is it's decreasing, the folks that are at that age. So do I think we're going to get eight? I don't, but do I think we'll get some people who will choose to retire in part because of this? I do.
What is the date that they have to let us know by?
It's on the front cover there. Thanks, Jeff.
What is it?
November 8th.
November 8th, okay, perfect. That way, it's in time for our budget, so that we're aware of it.
Yep.
Anybody else? All right, all in favor of offering a retirement incentive? Great, thank you, motion passes. Did you also discuss that there's no need right now for the executive session?
No, we didn't do that.
No.
All right. So at this point, in talking to Jack earlier, really, we have no update at this point on this, so we're just going to postpone that to a, an agenda further along either the October, the next October one, or the 4th of November for this.
Okay.
So, anybody have anything else?
Can I just ask a question on the early retirement? How do, how do you advertise that? Because I know in the past, we've, we've extended it, right? Because we've had people come in late, looking for the opportunity to take advantage of that. So how does this get advertised to the, to the staff?
Teacher union?
Yeah, we will get this out to all teachers via email. In addition, we'll also work closely with the union too, so we can use as many avenues as possible to communicate it to everybody.
Not that I'm looking for these people to retire, we have great people working for us, but it just seems like we continually see the cycle of, all right, there's more people that are interested, and we need to extend this or open a backup, so how do we market this, the, you know, so that everybody learns of it, you know, when we release it?
In advance of the deadline, yeah, yeah. We will get that message out.
Okay.
Anybody have anything else? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Christine and Shannon. All in favor? All right, motion passes. Thank you, everybody.